Open the town bar for a select meeting for Thursday, March 11th, 2021. All three selectmen are present, the town administrator, the department head, the trustees of the cemeteries, and Leo Martel is videotaping for the general public, and Linda Dickerson will upload those of the town website. Okay, I have some old business, gentlemen. We have the regular meeting minutes from March 4th.
Motion to approve the regular meetings from March 4th as written.
Second. Okay, motion been made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
My glasses are hanging from me. Okay, Bob, do you want to make a motion on the sealed meeting minutes?
Or approve the non-public minutes from March 4th as amended, and they're supposed to be sealed afterwards.
And the time that started was 7:44 PM.
Second.
Motion been made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll open up for public comment real quick. Clear the public comment this time. Bring it back to town business.
Okay, public comment.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Are you on the agenda? You don't want to wait, or?
No, this is.
Okay, go ahead.
This Saturday at 10 AM, we're going to be meeting down here at the cemetery to remove the wreaths from the three cemeteries and start a cemetery. Anybody who wants to volunteer, come along. I know somebody's got a brand-new truck out here, maybe we can get them to haul the wreaths to the transfer station.
That sounds like a good idea to bring that truck in.
Woody has a special place for it.
He can bring his wife's car for that, though.
Sorry.
You're gone?
Yep.
When do you pick up those wreaths? Every year, we can't put them in the boom, right?
Woody's good. He has one area inside the burn pile where he's burning all the wreaths with metal rings and stuff like that.
Because I know he's been making us do it, he's like.
Yeah.
Okay.
But he told me last week that he would have a special place for it. Just one side of the burn pile, that way it's all together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is that it, Tom?
That's it.
Thank you. And so looking for volunteers at 10 AM Saturday for removal of the wreaths.
And we will have coffee and donuts.
Okay. Tom, we just opened up for public comment. I mean. Okay. All right, closing public comment, bringing it back. Let's see. Who wants to make a motion about?
RSA 31:95-B, subparadigm, minimum 3B, to accept money from wreaths across Dunbar in an amount of $65. Do you have that amount, Lee?
Yes.
Okay, motion been made, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, thank you very much for collecting that money. Who wants to do the next one?
I'll do the second one also. RSA 31:95-B, subparadigm, minimum 3B, to accept fundraising for the cemetery improvements from ticket sales in an amount of $201. Do you have that money, Lee?
Yes.
Again, Don, I'd like to thank you on that. Motion been made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Did you have something, Liam? Okay. I saw you stretching back there. And again, Don, thank you for collecting that money. I thought it was a good fundraiser. Okay. First one up on the agenda is Don Larson's garden club update and a fan school discussion, I think.
Hi. This is. Coffee here.
Okay.
Oh, this is kind of a printout one?
Yeah. Helps a lot.
Can I make a comment? Do you have an extra?
Yeah.
Do you use a copy?
I agree with him already. What we're asking in this document, as you can see here, is that we'd like to just basically get your permission and add our option if you want to do Thanksgiving and not something else. Halloween, Halloween will always be something there. But we put down the holidays. You know, Mother's Day, Father's Day, we might not do it this year, but we'll do it next year. We just like to have your approval so that we do it. All right. We don't have to come back and ask each time to each holiday.
I have some concerns.
Okay.
Couple of them. Number one is there are other organizations that might be conflicting, so I'd rather see you come each time. And the other one is so that we can get some of the revival from the houses right across from the bandstand, because as you know, or probably you know, I got a complaint about the Valentine's Day one, which I brought to the guys from someone that lives right across from there. So, I mean, we have to take them into concern too as to what point on we. So, those are my concerns. And I'd rather you ask each time so that we can give you our blessing rather than give you a blanket blessing, and then we will whatever happens after. And especially with either the butters to the park or the fact that we don't know if the PTO or. I don't, you know, there's other organizations that I've been wanting to point out, and it might be conflicting, so, you know, that's where I am right now. I don't mind doing it when you have an event and you come up and you talk to us and we decide to do that. But it also gets some feedback from the people that live that across the lake.
Okay. Okay, Liam had a.
Yeah, well, I'm pretty much. I have a hard time with this. Is that thing going to be like, like, let's just say for, say, God's Day? Is that like for the month of March?
No.
And then Easter is the month of April? Because it seems like there's always something cluttering that thing, and it's like it's there for months. And we hardly ever see that thing clean, you know? So, my point is, if it's for the weekend of the. Then I could say, I guess it wouldn't bother me, but if it's going to be for like long extended period of time, you know, some people actually like to look at that thing.
In answer to that, for instance, Valentine's Day, we took that down maybe a week later when we had the snowstorm and everything else in that window. Christmas, we left that up a little longer than that just because, you know, they said they leave Christmas decorations up until January, and that's the reason that was left up. And the lighting of the trees, of course.
But the problem with Valentine's Day is we didn't know about it.
Yeah.
You definitely didn't. And I got a complaint from somebody that lives nearby, and they weren't very happy, and they said they wish somebody could take that and move it somewhere else. So, that's where we're at right now. They're frustrating the neighbors that live nearby.
Okay. But you had a lot of praise from, you know, the zellers which were right across the street from it, and they loved it. And so, I mean, you can't please everybody. I realize that.
I did have, I did have one person complain to me, but then I had, within the same day, I had two people say they loved it, you know? So, I had both sides of the fence, kind of like mobbed it on that. Not on the Christmas lady, I had nobody complain to me on that. But on the Valentine's Day, they thought that looked a little hokey. They said went from the Christmas lighting right to the Valentine's Day, and they thought, you know, the president did complain, and said, you know, that's kind of hokey-looking out there for them. So, I think as a board, we're going to try and run a balance on it. And I might give a little feedback.
I hope the Christmas lights were outstanding this year. I like what you did with the trees. And I thought it looked really sharp. I liked the fact it was extended a little bit, probably a little bit longer than I wanted, but it was still extended. I thought it was pretty, made the town look nice. Just a little couple of spirits. I'm concerned that Easter, Easter is a, is a religious holiday, and I wouldn't support Easter at all because of the religious kind of things.
You normally do do Easter, don't you?
Well, see, once again.
Right.
I agree with you there. You know, once again, I'm just the messenger. But the thing is that the point on Easter is that it's not going to have a religious thing that's going to be turned and turned to children.
Right. But the thing is, that's where you have an egg roll and Easter.
Right. But the thing is, do we really need lights for Easter? Do we really need lights for Mother's Day? Do we really need lights for?
Well, I think it's the use is what he's looking at. Yeah. And sometimes, I mean, you've got certain seasons that you do use the lights in order. But I think our concern, or my concern, is I'm trying to weigh between, you know, some usage with it and giving the butters a break once in a while so that everybody's happy rather than one side's happy and the other side's miserable. You know, when somebody tells you they wish they could take that out of there, it's kind of sad because it looks good when it's there, you know?
One, one good thing about putting this in writing and coming to us is the fact that if we do have you come each time now, if somebody does complain, we can say, listen, they were looking at 11 or 12 times a year doing this, and we've agreed to, you know, have them come in and maybe do it a time or two a year. And just looking at this schedule, I think this is too much to. I don't like to, I don't like to shut anything down that's, you know, beneficial to the town people because as Mike said, the lighting out there did look nice, and a lot of people drove by and enjoyed that through the winter months. As we spoke about in the meetings during COVID, we kind of agreed to leave it up a little bit longer because it was depressing weather for a lot of people, a lot of kids. So, we kind of agreed with you and allowed you guys to keep that up. But I think I'd rather see you guys just come in before myself. I don't know.
Yeah. For St. Patrick's Day, we're going to decorate on Saturday and take down on the 18th. So, I mean, that's.
What's the date on Saturday?
Saturday is the 13th. So, we're going to do it in the afternoon, and it won't take us long, trust me.
Yeah.
But we'll put them up Saturday, take them down on Thursday morning after St. Patrick's Day. Easter is the 4th of April, so, I mean, that's two weeks out. And, you know, we got Easter eggs and stuff like this that we're going to.
I know you guys do the Easter egg hunt thing and that stuff with your kids.
And, and another time, maybe next year, we'll be able to do the Easter egg roll and stuff like that. But right now with the pandemic, I don't think it would be wise. So, we just want to give them, you know, a little spirit. I think the schools have something.
Speaking of spirit, will you have Guinness on cap for St. Patrick's Day?
Yeah.
So, let me get Tom, and then what I'd like to do is maybe address St. Patrick's Day because it's right here.
Right.
Okay, so let's get, or Tom?
Well, what I'd like to add, last year I was president of the garden club. This year, our vice president, Nora Lamar, is president. The number of holidays they listed, I think they just listed everything that was a possibility.
Yeah.
They had no intention of doing that. They just said, well, what if somebody wanted to do this, wanted that? And, you know, most of the people are going to do things very tastefully. And in many towns and many cities, you have the Kona's Club and the Rotary. They both, you know, I think they both have the Rotary. They, they have given pretty much heart-blooded number of holidays. So, this is not an unusual request. It's what is kind of standard for many of the towns. But Kona's just do it. They go to the town once a year, say, you know, we're going to do these holidays and.
We're in Dunbar, where, as you know, they do things a little different.
Yeah. But it's kind of, I mean, I understand you've got to have a fine balance.
Yeah.
You know, if you, anytime you do anything, some people like it, some people won't like it. The, so you try to, you know, outweigh what's the good versus the bad. But to even have an organization in town that's willing to come up and do these decorations in no case will leave with guidance if somebody says it isn't done right, you know, we can always redo it. It is a benefit to the town because until just recently, you know, nobody really did mention anything.
Right.
So, it, I understand a little bit of being gun-shy, but on the other side of it, is if you get an organization that's willing to tastefully decorate the bandstand half a dozen holidays a year, and townspeople love it, it's just kind of a pain in the neck having to come by each time you want to do it, sit down and say, explain what you're going to do and that type of thing. So, I don't know.
Don, you generally don't have chat notes anywhere.
Literally, if you have free food or something, that's why you say that.
Tom, why don't you say that? Because this is presented to us, and we agree to this. We agree to all of these. I just assume agree to them as they go along. And the other thing is, our bandstand is closer to the homes here than when you go to home and when they have their events, which are a little bit of distance between the homes. So, that's the balance we have to try to do too is we can't hear from the neighbors that don't like it every time it happens. We already have one problem like that, so, I mean.
But I've walked, seen it. You know, I'm not a big person to ex- Easter, but if that is some holiday that we should avoid other than doing an egg hunt or something like that, I would think we'd want to avoid that for, you know, for reasons of religion. Mother's Day and Father's Day, I would think, are kind of ex out of my mind. Fourth of July, I wouldn't mind, I don't think, because we normally have something going on. If it was Sunday, I wouldn't mind. And then I think when it comes to either Halloween or Thanksgiving, you should pick one of the two.
Well, we probably take out the link because we do the Halloween.
Get rid of Thanksgiving.
Once again, we toss Thanksgiving in there just, you know.
Basically, the one thing with Halloween is they're already used to the fact that they're going to have a ton of kids around.
Right.
Memorial Day is kind of.
They've got same.
Same way now, yeah. Memorial Day is morbid. It's a somber, a somber event. I think we have, already have a ceremony on the common to celebrate Memorial Day.
So, if I'm looking at it, I would, you know, easily ex out Easter, Mother's Day, Father's Day, and Thanksgiving, and then I would probably pick one of the two of the Valentine's or St. Patrick's Day. But let's look at St. Patrick's Day because as you said, that's coming right up. So, let's concentrate on that one as a board, make a decision on allowing or disallowing that one. Like, what are your thoughts on St. Patrick's?
I have no issue. I think it's going to be short amount of time. Weather pending, I have no issues.
And the other thing too is you can talk to us about the amount of time each time you come in.
Right.
You know, like Christmas lights, let's leave them up for 30 days or 60 days. The other smaller ones, you know, a week or three days or four days or just the weekend. You know? So, that's my thought. Bob, go ahead on just St. Patrick's.
I was just going to ask, what are your plans for St. Patrick's Day?
Well, basically, we've got green lights and a couple of shamrocks, and that's about it. Nora, we do, or Nora, well, Nora, because she was born and raised in Ireland, so she takes it very seriously. I mean, there's not going to be.
I think someone named us like the system, Guinness.
Yeah. Takes it with eye. But there's no alcohol on comments. I'm sorry, guys.
Are the lights going to, are you going to turn on the lights or are they off at a certain time?
Now, the goal, we have a timer that goes dust till four hours.
Okay. Just, just because if we're asked questions, it's easy to answer them and say, well, it's going to last all this amount of time at night, you know?
Yeah, four hours. What were the dates on St. Patrick's Day?
It'll be Wednesday.
Decorated, uh, Saturday.
Yeah, 14th is a Sunday, and then we take them all down on the 18th after Wednesday, all day.
So, you put them on the 13th, you'll put them up in your light until 14?
Right, yeah. The lights we're going to use are so muted that the bandstand lights are brighter than what we're going to use.
This just adds a little color, a little, little spirit.
Please, Guinness, we're going to want to waste.
We don't have a secret now.
Green lights. Other accessories. Dust till four hours. Put up on the 13th, lit on the 14th, the 18th. Leo, you had a call?
A couple of things on. For Memorial Day, the Fourth of July, those fans that the homes have put up, are going to be incorporated in?
Well, that's, those aren't holidays that we'll probably do this year, and we probably won't do because we put the blunting around.
Exactly, yeah.
And I don't know, you know, who has that right now, but it wasn't the garden club that put it up.
No, actually, the ex town commander committee always takes care of that.
Okay. I never knew that was a thing.
I didn't know there was another.
Even though they're a default organization, they still maintain that. They still put them up and take them down. So, you know, I didn't know if that was going to conflict.
Yeah, no, we probably won't do anything after Fourth of July. We won't do anything. Old Home Day, if we have it, possibly. If there's something that we can do to.
A lot of times, we're doing it for that too, so.
And, and the other thing is, is that we, as it getting lighter later than that light, you know, we may just put the lights on for two hours.
Right.
You know, so it's a two, four, six, you know?
Oh, you do have something that can do it for two hours?
Yeah, and so, you know, we'll take a look at, you know, what time it is now. For St. Patrick's Day, it'll still be dark, you know, at seven o'clock.
Right.
Two hours is only one.
Yeah. So, you know, just to get the spirit of it.
I don't have any problem with St. Patrick's Day if that's how you're going to do it, and it's a limited amount of time. But I don't, unlike Bob, I guess I would like you guys to come, you know, as you put it out.
I didn't finish my.
Oh, you didn't?
No. My other point was, and I don't know if this even.
Who are you?
Me, you know, me would know. Sometimes people want to use it for weddings.
No, no.
No, no, but sometimes people want to use it for weddings too, you see? So, that might kind of like, so that's why I use a great idea is they come ahead of time, you know, every time. Because somebody might have tried to kind of like made arrangements for having a wedding. It's kind of like a block to tell them that, I'm sorry, but we're doing this this weekend now, or whatever.
Most of our, our decorations, there's going to be lights around the banister, and then maybe lights around the top. And that'll be the majority of it. There's nothing in the center. Only time there is is when we add the Christmas tree there. And if you get married in December and the bandstand, Christmas tree will light it up. But we do think that. I'm not married anymore. Overall, you know, we're just, we're just trying to give it a little different look, you know, for a couple of days, couple of weeks, whatever the intent is.
And let's try this one, and we'll see if we get any feedback from the, from the thing we're playing against.
Well, yeah, because, you know, I agree. Some of the things you do, it's good, it's good for the kids, especially if you've got something, because it's not a lot for them to do. And while I understand that, I know it's a pain to come before us each time, we end up with enough information that if somebody's bending our hair because they're not liking it, at least we have an explanation.
Right. We have the hours, it's going to be lit. We have one is coming up and down, and, you know, gives us a little bit to give them a little feedback and maybe, maybe stop a huge fight going on, you know?
Well, it's, it's my town green, so, you know, it's houses all around.
Yeah.
I find the tree lights and that. I came by on March 1st and took all the timers off. It's like, boom, trees are out. We can't get the cords because they're underneath the ice, you know? But.
Just wait another couple of days, we'll be fine.
Yeah. We don't want to discourage what's going on.
Yeah.
But again, too, is we have to be sensitive to, not just the neighbors, but if the PTO or some other organization wants to use it, then it becomes a conflict, you know? Not that we've seen too many organizations use it, and I just want to bring that up because I don't know things will ever change.
Well, one thing with our organization is that we've got the money. We're not going to charge town anything for doing this. We buy the lights, we buy, you know, everything, so.
Well, and as I said, I thought the Christmas decorations were spot on. They were really, a lot of people were taken back from it. I thought they were, they looked great.
Yes, well, because we're president.
I gotta be a pony in here sometime.
I did find a lot of cool out there. Was that what?
But no, the, you know, we gotta do a lot of volunteer work in town, and so we want to appreciate them.
No, I did all that.
So, St. Patrick's Day sounds like a consensus of what it's going to go from the board.
Okay.
With those limited things you guys have already put on it. And I guess on the end of most.
On Easter, I would plan for the Easter activities for the children at the activity day. But I wouldn't necessarily go with lights and stuff like that. That's pushing the envelope, right, in my opinion?
Yeah. You know, it's later down in our discussion, actually, it's not, it's next on the agenda. We are going to talk, speak about lightening up some of the restrictions just like the government did today for the state of New Hampshire. At the town, we're going to start lightening up some of our restrictions as well. So, it could be Easter that you guys might be able to have an activity. Who knows?
Well, how about this? On Thursday, the 18th, I think that's, that is just in the next meeting?
Uh, I see it?
Yeah.
Yes, next Thursday, the 18th.
Okay. We'll be able to have hopefully feedback from St. Patrick's Day at that time. We'll come in and we'll talk to you, you know. We have to come back and talk to the club about something for the kids, and then. But we'll come back and make a presentation in regards to Easter. How would that be, you know?
I would think, yeah, run it by us and see. You know, hopefully, if there's enough percentage of the people within the state that have, I think we're at 24% now, and they feel like, you know, something can come along with social distancing and masking, then maybe, you know, Easter, like, if you spread the stuff fire up.
Yeah.
I mean, the kids are pretty much back in school now, and things will start rolling out.
I think Bob would turn it off first.
Yeah.
No, Don, thank you. I really appreciate, you know, you coming in and allowing us to discuss it with you. And I think we can come to a happy meeting.
Okay. And we'll tear down the list when we come back on Thursday.
Yeah, okay.
Just remember, Memorial Day, they really have a great, they usually have a ceremony out there, particularly at Dr. Star. And weather permitting, they usually will have a speaker out there talking a little bit about it, so that may be already covered, so.
That's the topic to ban.
Exactly.
So, I'm on that committee too.
Okay. So, that, that way, you know, you may be conflicting with someone already that I thought said.
Yeah. But, you know, maybe, you know, there's something you can do to, you know, have a little disaster or something along those lines too.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you guys coming. All right. All right, we're gonna move on to the agenda, town office opening guides, um. As I just stated, the governor was on today, and he's, uh, lighting up restrictions for restaurants and a bunch of public areas. Um, looks like they tried to keep, uh, the same as we'll do, still keep masks on, still keep our social distancing. But I think, uh, one of the steps we could take is unlock our doors now, so that the public can enter and keep their masks on and keep their social distancing. And, um, I don't think we're gonna get an abundance of flow anyway, most of the people are used to in the town calling ahead. And I don't even think we should put it on our website or anything, that, you know, okay, the town's unlocked, we'll just let it. When the people come to this door, it won't be locked anymore, let it, uh, start to soft open, what I'm talking about. What do you guys?
It'd be kinda nice, though, to, to put it up there just in case, 'cause somebody might be mailing in their registration when they really wanna come in and register it, or.
Yeah, so I, um, brought this before the board tonight because I had a few people come to the building, and they were surprised that we were still closed to the public by appointment only.
Yeah.
Uh, depending on the, the, um, branch of government, um, I went up to DOT to drop off paperwork, and they were open. Uh, DRA is not open, uh, so it's, we're getting different, differences of opinions. I, I asked all the department heads how they felt and if they were, if they were interested in doing that. Building Department wants to open the doors, uh, personally, I do, Joe Maria does, um, Hope said she is, would love to see the doors open, but I haven't heard from Linda, and Judy said she's got mixed feelings, but she's got the later shift, so she probably won't see a lot of activity if the town clerk stays at, during her, her day hours, but what Hope, uh, expressed is that the appointment thing is actually puts on a lot more work on there, like, because they have to return telephone calls, they have to schedule appointments, and then they have to be diligent of watching for those people, and, and not everyone can make the appointments right on that time, so that, along with the online registration things, uh, are keeping them quite busy, so she said she's ready. If everyone will follow the floor markings of the social distancing, wear their masks, and then, um, just limit the number of people that are in the building. We can even post that on the door, um, to, you know, open door cautiously, um, or to watch for.
Talking about other departments, is there anything at the transfer station you guys would be willing to change right now, or do you think we would stay as cool there for a couple of weeks?
We do require a mask, there's a big sign down there, mask required. Uh, I've seen people come in without a mask, and I don't know what approaches them. The night collector, uh, demo, we still have, Swatch Shop is still closed. I think the, uh, the way they're doing the, um, recycling is still excellent, I don't think there's, that's gonna be any change on that.
Right. I couldn't think of any change down there, I think.
I couldn't, yeah, I can't either.
You mean, they open up the demo cars if they have to, and they keep it closed the rest of the time, which I think is.
And they're accepting demo and money now, so, really, what, what's changed, except, maybe, I could see Swatch Shop, a lot of people have asked about Swatch Shop. I think it's probably a little bit too early for that, but I actually see that down the road will open up again, contrary to the opinion of the employees, because it's more work for them.
But, you know, and, at Swatch Shop, I was, I've gone live, I've never seen a whole bunch of people, I've seen one or two people looking stuff up.
But a lot, a lot of people said they missed that, and, uh.
Maybe in a few weeks, why don't we try and open that back up?
I, I think so, I, I think that would be good, it, it's.
Be kind of the first soft.
Toy, you will see, yeah. And I think, I think the president would appreciate.
I'd like to swap stuff, 'cause I'd like to dump my stuff there.
Yeah. Well, you know, a lot of people have some good useful things, it's a shame to throw them out, and somebody else could.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that, you know, you're gonna watch the amount of people coming in, or, 'cause they did say that some places would open up, but they may have lines. And so, I mean, that's important, especially if somebody's compromised a little.
Yeah, I think we still, I think we still want to do the same in and out, in, entrance and exit, that's worked out well.
I, I would, uh, it's not effective, my name, and, uh, just announce it, tomorrow, put an announcement out tomorrow, just to say, you can come in for business.
Yes.
Maintain social distancing, maintain protective masks.
Sign on the entrance to say that.
And what about, um, speak about limiting the number, is there a number that, you know, fits in that hall?
Right now, if we have, there's the one in front of the window, six feet from there, a second one that's near the tax collector, and then one at the door, and then we put a chair in that hallway at that other six, so there's even.
One, nine, one, five.
Five in the, in the hall.
But that, that, that's on every day, if you have that, then it's going to.
And I know as the office staff observes that office getting busy, we'll make an effort to go outside and come back the in, other door, just to get down to this end, vice versa, that we need to, need to, and I haven't heard any complaints about people saying, you're passing by me, and you're too close, or anything like that, and just, um.
Okay, um, you wanna do it Monday then? I think we can start a softer thing on Monday, and, you know, just to lock the doors, but keep the social distancing the same and the mask. And, uh, Lee, if I could ask you for the first few weeks to keep an eye on that island.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, maybe have a few people wait outside until it frees up, if it gets too busy in there.
And the thing is, I would still announce it, because you're gonna put some guidelines down, like mask wearing, watch your social distancing, and you may.
Those are already on the door.
Right, but the thing is, just to remind, remind you, just, just reminded that we.
Oh, yeah, and when you give your notice, state that the masks are still required in.
Still required, yeah, yeah.
Just, you know, just so, to remind them, that's all.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get something on that.
Okay.
Monday.
Okay, going to the next ceremony, are you going to that?
Yeah, yeah, right there, okay, I'm sorry.
Um, discuss exemption fees for, uh, roadblocks. Lee, you got a package together for that?
Um, actually, it's in, you have that on?
Yeah.
I was gonna make comments regarding exemption fees, like that. So, this was brought to my attention by Donna White, she is, um, trying to be proactive on things that are still lingering in her department, and because she's got a subdivision before the planning board that is going to affect what the planning board decides for the exemption fee for that individual, um. She wanted to make sure that this didn't get slipped through the cracks, and we do have three on the books, um.
Every, every.
I don't, I don't have a group.
We don't have, it should be in that packet.
Okay, just to encourage it.
Is it?
All right, well, I, just to Kelsey, one of them.
Um, there was an email from Donna White, and.
I saw two, I think, on the email, Kelsey, one of them there.
To, um, Dionne and Eric, and those are both on the Guideline Road, um, they're a lot newer than, uh, but it's something that I'm hoping through the planning department in my office, that there's open communication, and that we're tracking these a little bit.
My suggestion is, why don't we take this week to review everything properly?
Yeah.
And since Michael DeBodilao and Mike just became a, a newly affirmed selectman, we'll have him get sworn in by Linda next week, and then make a decision next week's meeting, and I'll recuse myself on the Kelsey rule.
You want me to email all the information?
Yeah, I think you already did.
I did, but the other thing, I think, I, I put in the body to email the other two, uh, exemption fees.
Okay.
We've had this situation before where the oral exempt drive approached this woman and said, I want my money, 'cause it'd been carried on over year to year in the, um, town report, when it was an oversight from the accounting department, the planning department, everyone talking to each other
Okay.
to, um, monitor the true expenses for these bonds, and either act on them and, um, release them if that's necessary.
Are you guys reviewing it next week, Mike?
Yeah.
As far as the business changes.
They pointed out some information to me tonight, from, because it does involve him personally, uh, uh, just, he's just steered me in a direction where I could get more information, that's all he did. And I appreciate that, but, I think, is, um, I'm about ninety percent there, but I'm gonna look at that information and direct me to.
And I only found that by reading the information that Lee was sent to me, 'cause it was stuff that I forgot about.
And I think it's, uh, actually, Bob, I think we might wanna invite the road agent in next time to see if any questions, 'cause it, a lot of.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
It doesn't involve him.
So, table until next week, you, you, you get the road agent?
Yeah, and the thing is, it's, it's part of housekeeping, this is probably, we're probably about ten months behind the power curve here, where we should've had an action ten months ago.
Yeah, okay.
So, just for the record, we're a little bit late, but we're gonna make, uh, make it happen, uh, swiftly.
Yeah, hoping now with the staff in my office that these will be the items that are, you know, delegated and handed to monitor and maintain and bring to our vision, that they either need to be acted on, or somebody needs to.
But I'd just like to have the voting come in and explain some of the expenses, so we can, uh, make a, uh, an informed decision.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is town meeting update, our budget, our budget passed this year, um, as we proposed it, um, but then there was some additional monies that were.
The amount that we remitted on the floor, it was twenty thousand three eighty-four sixteen, I did not write it out here, Mike.
Twenty thousand, uh, so.
Twenty thousand three eighty-four point one six.
One six, um, I didn't wanna slow that motion down on the floor, but I did wanna ask them how they, um, gotten that dollar, because it was stated, um, to bring our employees to a three percent, uh, raise, and the fact that, um, the fact that we already gave our town employees a one percent raise, um, I was thinking it was adding three more percent to it, and the others, like, but I think we're at, thinking it was adding three more percent, but.
No, it's, uh, yeah, it's actually.
And doing the numbers, it looks like it's two percent more, so a total raise, um, of three percent for our employees.
But I think, Lee, you're gonna look into the impact on retirement?
It's all in the, it's right there.
It's all in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In fact, uh, if I could speak to Lee, her numbers, um, the amount proposed in the, in the amendment, was twenty thousand three eighty-four. The difference that Lee came up, and she looked at worst-case scenario, including overtime and potential overtime, and the difference was one thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars. So I think the intent was, um, was, was spot on, correct, the three percent, yeah, the amount of money was good, and, uh, I think for twelve hundred, twelve hundred seventy-one dollars, we can, we can add to that with our, with our, uh, with our unassigned balance, make it happen.
This one says on the payroll, and this one is new elected officials, and you can see on the back.
Oh, elected officials, that's a, that's a.
The issue is, um. When we gave our one percent across the board.
Elected officials.
And it's almost semantics, I pay taxes, so am I, I an employee, am I an employee of the town?
No, you're elected.
Yeah.
But I still have to pay taxes on it.
Well, you're paying taxes in town, but you're paying taxes for the employees to get the three percent, you're elected, so you're getting one percent.
Um, I don't mind including, um, all the same people that we had on the previous one, only because it would keep our calculations all even for Lee on her end.
Yeah.
So that some don't have one percent, some have, uh, three percent, 'cause she's already done the one percent for everybody.
Yeah.
And those two percent would just keep it even.
Yeah.
Well, not only for Lee, but I think the intent that, you know, he, he, they just wanted to take the one percent, bring up the three percent, hopefully approved. And the intent was just, whoever were paying one percent, it's now three percent.
And I have, um, I didn't think we were gonna have these numbers all crunched for this week, so I told Lee not to worry about it, but since these numbers are crunched, I think that's.
Yeah, and I, and what, after doing all this, I also, in the senior path that you have, being funded for the worksheet that we were working, so I double-checked all my column three lines to make sure that it was reflected currently for payroll income, and I was, um, when you think about it, you're looking at, um, SS Med and Medi, the fleet program doesn't pay part of that, um, the impact is really the initial retirement, and then the difference between removing one official, who's an elected official off of that list, really didn't change the bottom line number by much, I was pretty close.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion per our town meeting to, um, give a two percent additional rate to all payroll, um, employees, included elected officials, using the twenty thousand three eighty-four point sixteen, which was increased by our budget, and then adding an additional twelve hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirteen cents to make that, um, complete. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's been made, in second, all in favor?
Except for Mike, 'cause he hasn't been sworn in, I'm starting to wonder when he gets it.
Motion's been made, in second, all in favor?
Aye, aye. Interesting.
'Cause Leo's right, Linda's staying away from you.
Well, she should've been here tonight, I was not gonna vote for her.
I like to do exactly what the voters asked for, but in this instance, I don't think they, um, performed all the proper calculations to take care of all the full-time employees' calculations and part-time, and to include all of the government, uh, taxes and stuff that needs to be, and it wasn't that.
It was pretty close, though.
It was. Who, uh, made that motion at town meeting?
I think it's Duncan.
Oh, Duncan, and that's an attorney over on the, I mean.
He's on the school board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so that's the town, anything else from town meeting that, uh, anybody wanted to bring up? I think it went pretty smoothly, we were all able to meet in one room. Um, the sound system, I thought worked very well there, and I appreciate, uh, one thing I, I've forgotten, I would like to send out a personal thank you to the two people that helped set that up, as well as Clem Madden from the school board chair, um, for helping us out that night, setting that sound system up. It took a huge load off the selectmen's duties and the, uh, town administrator not to have to worry about that, they did an excellent job. And I was thinking we should actually send those to a, uh, a, a thank you card, along with a gift certificate in there, if you guys are feeling the same way.
Gift certificate?
Or. For setting that up, yeah. It took a huge load off us that night not to worry about it, we could sit there and get our paperwork squared away for our meeting and not worry about that whole part.
I think, thank you, I, the gift certificate, I think, has gone a little bit push and elbow too much.
All right.
Because there are, there are elected officials who are running that.
Not elected for us.
There were elected officials from the town of Denver.
Running that?
The, uh, we had, uh, the school board members.
Clem was the school board member, the other two are just volunteers. I wasn't saying for Clem.
Oh, that's, I thought you were.
No, just the other two volunteers helped, I'd like to send a, uh.
I think, um, the one who was running the sound system, he's on the school board. That's the one that lives on, uh, down by you, on.
Right, I know.
Everett Road?
Everett Road.
I know, I just felt like, 'cause it, it took a huge weight off us not having to worry about it, and I would like to send them a gift.
But they were being paid too. They were paid.
Right.
Yeah.
They were paying three hours.
Yeah, three hour minimum.
Well, we won't do anything, I don't care.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, you know, if they were pure volunteers, I would say, it's something, it's something different, but they were, they were being paid, it helped well. Uh, it was after hours, and they were paying, I don't know if it was overtime, but I think it was.
Well, I know, I know we talked about hiring a company and paying that company to commit, but that person wasn't there.
No, but those two people understood, 'cause we talked about it when we were in the gym.
Yeah.
And Clem said, you know, you guys pay them, and said, you have to pay them three hours when you last come in, you're required to pay them three hours.
We may see an invoice or a bill from the school for those.
All right, yeah, 'cause Clem said he was gonna cover that. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, let's send out the thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I think we'd be most appropriate.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I didn't know that was a husband and wife, you know?
No.
I don't think so, she works at the school, and he just is.
So let's, some, pretty sad, some thank yous could be in that.
Right, okay, yeah.
They weren't arguing, they couldn't have been arguing, right?
Yeah. Appreciate it. And I think it's a point of order too, I just wanna, I just, um, I seem to have noticed it was a, uh, someone on the ballot handling ballots during the county. And I thought that was appropriate, 'cause they, they were ostracizing me, Mike, you can't go near the ballots, you can't go near the, uh, near the votes, you can't do anything. And I saw someone handling ballots who was on the ballot, I'm not gonna say names, but I think, I thought the moderator was a little bit off in the way he handled volunteers coming in the county. Because one person was on the ballot.
Oh, how do you even notice that?
Um, I saw that, and I said, you know, why is he in there handling ballots? And, uh, not that it would've made a difference, but I thought I was being, um, shunned away, like I had a plane.
Yeah.
Yet someone else was on the ballot, was counting ballots. Inappropriate, just a point of order.
Okay.
So I wanted to share that with.
Really, no, I, I didn't notice it like that, I, I probably would've mentioned something to him, because I, I felt the same way as you did before, that, you know, certain times we've been able to stand, you know, within the room, and then other times we've been told to get almost off the premises, and, you know, what is the, we're here to oversee the election process.
Right.
Whether we're running or not, we should be able to, just, you know, look at.
I'd like to share, share that with the, uh, with the moderator.
I've seen men who are missing from that.
From the, in the past, um, if you were running for office, you could still count ballots, as long as you didn't count those particular. So whoever was running, whoever he's talking about, if you're running for the school board, they couldn't count the school board ballots, they could count the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the public's ballots, or the.
Town's, I guess.
Or they could count the town ballots, but they couldn't count the, so, it depends on how that, who, who was it, what they were counting.
Well, again, it's perception, yeah.
I was gonna say, you know. It's always been that way in the past.
In the past, but with this moderator, from day one, if you were on the ballot, no matter who you were, you couldn't be in that room, 'cause I ended up having to be out, 'cause he said I was on the ballot, so I couldn't show up. It happened with Dave last year, and it happened with you this year, and if it was anybody on the ballot that aren't supposed to be there, 'cause he didn't want them hating anything, and that was his call, you know, but, uh, that's his choice, I guess, 'cause he runs the election. So, I'll bring it up next time he comes in to talk, goes to the next election, he'll be here for one more election.
Sure.
Are you running? I might, you know, it's called writing.
Any other town meeting updates? Overall, I think it went smooth, and I think, I'm glad we did it now, and.
I think the transition could get the other half, half pretty smoothly too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, the social distancing, the waiting in the chairs, perfect.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, um, selectmen's summer schedule, I think Lee has printed one on for us.
Yeah.
Um, tell us about the colors.
Um, I basically highlighted the meeting dates and struck out the different black dates, so, I don't know if that's clear enough so that you can see the dates that we will be meeting.
So the highlighted ones and the dates we're meeting?
Yeah.
And the twenty-fifth is struck out, right?
Twenty-fifth of what?
Of March.
Yeah.
So, we'll meet on the eighteenth next week, and then the twenty-fifth will be struck.
I will be on vacation, I'm requesting a leave, it's a stay on leave, um, but you guys are more than welcome, I did put, strike it out, because I'm not gonna be here.
What day is this, Lee?
The twenty-fifth of March.
Twenty-fifth, that's why she struck it off.
Do you guys wanna meet then, or do you?
No, I think it's fine, because I think we're slow enough now, where we can start every other week, and we look at what's on the agenda last week and the week, and our hard work's done, fine, yeah, can I, can I?
Sure. Twenty-seventh, this is the day I'm gonna, I'm gonna have day, I was hoping that'd be the off day, that's the only day I can't make on, twenty-seventh.
What is that, in May?
May, May.
Is, uh, is the first? On April?
Yeah.
That's the day we are meeting.
We are meeting.
Both of them are meeting, I know.
Yeah.
So those are the days we're meeting, she put a line through the other one, so the highway ones, the day we're meeting.
And I stopped it at the end of September, I don't know, can't recall, we went into October.
Why, you did about the same, you did about the same weekend?
Yeah.
I thought we did go in October, didn't we?
I thought we did.
No, it was because colder than light. No, it was because of COVID, we liked.
We started in May last year, and we went through October.
And I don't see anything that was too busy in October that we couldn't do in October again.
Do you wanna strike out a couple more?
Yeah, I want to strike out a couple more. So we're gonna go on the 30th, we're gonna meet right in September.
Yeah, yeah.
So we meet the 30th.
Yeah.
Strike out the 7th.
Yeah.
Meet the 14th.
Yeah.
Strike the 21st, and meet the 28th.
Okay, and then continue with Russell.
Yeah. Okay, so I quit off like that, so you guys can observe it.
Do you?
Yeah.
Oh, you did the same thing?
You got it.
Yeah, okay.
Leen, you got a pen?
Okay. Leen, you want a pen?
So the 27th is the one I, I, I need to take the line. Do you have any plans that would be conflicting with the schedule at this point?
I'm just gonna assume that the one of May.
Of May?
No, that's May.
And you know, if we miss one or two meetings, it's not the end of the world, you know, it's.
No, but I just want to put it out there.
Yeah, no, if David and I are in this majority, we'll try to carry, do some of the real.
Some hard stuff.
Hard stuff, so not to worry about it.
Now, as always, we'll put off any thing that's controversial.
Yeah, we should put down all the.
We want everybody to be able to take the heat on the controversial. Okay, that was good, Leen.
I will be giving you guys a draft copy of the personnel policy, because we've made quite a few amendments. Those amendments are handed out as instructed through the personnel policy. But that amendment would be distributed by its time to get all those lists and signed off on with the.
We should, we need a, we need one of the sort of a workshop for, we said we would look at elected positions.
Yeah.
And maybe the personnel plan will be the secondary thing. I don't think there's much in the personnel plan that needs to be changed.
Has the travel on, so you said you want to revisit that?
Right.
And then there was.
Elected positions?
Yeah.
Elected positions, as in salaries, okay.
That was across the board. We're gonna do a top to bottom review of all of them.
So why don't we get into April and sometime in there, try and have a.
A list?
Yeah, we'll do, do a workshop, we'll make any decisions out of it, then we'll come back and we'll public meeting.
That sounds like a plan. You can share the information initially.
Then give us a little bit of time, Leen, we can move it around during April sometime, so we can have some time to find out from the different towns.
Probably towards the end of April, this way you have a chance to get something you have to.
And if it pushes into May, it's not the end of the year.
Absolutely. It was early summer, we wanted to get it done, but I think we first discussed it. Now, when you go into, we won't have any surprises when we go into the budget season. People come in in January with their hands out saying, "Feed me."
Okay, took care of the selectmen's summer schedule. I'm gonna hit some of the mailbox items now.
Yeah, we could take care of the 27th.
Yeah. Okay, Leen reached out to Michelle Clark from the DRA, the Hampshire Government, from the Municipal Association, and asked a question during town meeting. They wanted to know if someone could amend the article as written to come from C.R.A. to raise taxes, or for to raise taxes. And the answer was yes. They can actually change where the funding comes from at the town meeting, as long as it's duly stated there. So she's gonna keep a copy of this in her file. So then if this comes up again at town meeting, we'll have a copy of it in our legal file.
I did share that with the moderator as well.
Which was interesting, because he's sharing it to Fred, because I think, I think the moderator was spot on, and then he second guessed himself and went back to Fred. And Fred came up and said that he didn't think the funding could change, but it actually can.
Just all the emails.
Well, really, the intent didn't change, you lose the funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, we have an office employee that's gonna be taking a annual vacation a week time, and I'm gonna sign that and send that in. We have two withdrawals from our capital reserve tonight, one of which was discussed at the town meeting as well. This'll catch us up on the accounting that we needed. We had an amount that needed to be deducted for more Article 9, the remaining balance of 57023. And that's to pay a bill from Fairfield for the town truck for putting a body on hand or the cloud on that. So Leen has signed up, and that accounting paperwork is here. And I'm gonna pass this on to you, like, to put your initials. And that will clean up that paperwork that we discussed at the town meeting to make those surplus balances in the highway capital reserve fund correct. And the second one is to transfer 743750. And that's to be withdrawn for the statistical reevaluation. And that will make that balance fund correct as well.
It wasn't that far off, but it definitely cleans it up.
Yeah. And I had picked up on those last week, and Leen and I discussed it before the town meeting. I have no time to change the books. We decided to make sure the corrections were done last week. Thank you, Bob. I'll leave these in the mailbox items, Leen. Mailbox items are complete now. Bring it back for public comment one more time. Open with public comment. Town administrator, you have anything for us?
I'll figure it out later.
Okay, thank you for all your time and extra time at the town meeting.
I do wanna share though that I have new hire that we've chosen to fill the vacancy in my office. I think it's very important to check, um, he's already delegated a few Excel spreadsheets that require understanding of, and it's related to the retro check. There was some accounting that we have to go through from January to town meeting, and adjustments that need to be made. And if you don't understand the whole process of how the Excel spreadsheet works, and we have already experimented, we're sharing a couple of our Excel spreadsheets, which the cloud allows you to do. So he's very excited to take on whatever I give him, and I think it's gonna be a good trip to the town.
Okay. Bob, you have anything for the town?
The only thing I have is if Leen signs this and seals it, we have to sign it.
Yes. Yeah, thank you.
All right, and Mike, you have a minute?
I wanted to recognize the chairman, and he thought he did a great job at the town meeting. I thought he was, he prepared, he helped well, and he did that. And Bob and I, we supported it as best we could, and that's the questions were great. And since when they someone saw, like, we're missing a hundred grand from our budget, well, we can execute it. We may turn it to the taxpayer during the year. And they were good questions. I felt too many on, but the thing is, but that's what, it's a public forum, and they, they asked the questions. But I thought we handled them well, and we had to just research what we were looking at, then we could answer it authoritatively. But you did a good job. I appreciate the time you put in to prepare.
I will say that you guys explained so much with your buttons to answer. And Mike, at least you answered where I was gonna go with that money that was returned from the government maintenance fund.
Yeah.
Was that we had to put off a lot of things that we wanted to do because of the COVID.
Yeah.
And so that's why there was that surplus, but.
Not, not just us, Bob, we had asked at the beginning of the year, all the departments pull off all their extra spending and come back to us, and a lot of departments think it was back substantial amount of money.
And so he hit his button and he answered, and I said, "There's no, less is better."
Yeah, and that's, they think, like, less.
You know, a lot of times, because we know so much about what went on during the budget process, it's easier to give a lot of information, but if you look at the crowd, if someone's gonna pass, sometimes less is better for our.
Oh, but, but I had one citizen come up to me, says, "We could have used more, Mike." Come on.
But you know, one thing I will say from the public camera, we do have those budget sessions with all the department heads. We do them a couple times a year with each department, and we have a budget meeting.
Budget hearing.
Budget hearing, public, public budget hearing. And I think if a few more people attended that and or watched, a lot of those questions would be answered.
But also, the way you guys prepared for the town meeting, you had all the answers. You had anticipated what might someone ask, and you had the answers. It was really, I felt like, very smooth, and you guys did a great job.
I did have several residents come up to us and thank us for, you know, doing a good job, and, you know, watching the funds for the town, because that's, you know, a lot of the responsibility.
Yeah, even to some hearing, they want the police be able to listen to you.
That worked too. All right, thanks. I'll make a motion to adjourn in a, in a clock.
Close the, but no signal.